I'll call the meeting to order. Good afternoon and welcome to the February 2nd, 2022 City Council Meeting. We acknowledge we are on traditional lands of Treaty IV territory. Treaty signed with 35 First Nations across Southern Saskatchewan, parts of Alberta and Manitoba, and the original lands of the Cree, Soto, Dakota, Nakota, Lakota, and the homeland of the Métis Nation. To ensure social distancing measures are being met during this time, some members of council and city administration are attending the meeting today through videoconferencing. All members of council are present either in chambers with me, as Counselor Shaw is, as acting deputy mayor, and all of the councils are appearing virtually. I'd like to remind everyone attending through videoconferencing to ensure your video camera and microphone are off. If a member of council wishes to speak, use the raised hand function, and when speaking, unmute your microphone and enable your video camera. All votes will be conducted with a recorded vote. Delegations will be attending the meeting today through teleconferencing to address City Council on various items on the agenda. I'll be looking over here quite a bit, Counselor Shaw. Can I have someone move in a motion to approve the agenda at the call of the chair with a receive and file of DE 22-4, which was to be a delegation, which is now a receive and file document? Thank you, Counselor Shaw. Can I have a secondary?
Bresciani.
Thank you, Counselor Bresciani. I'll call the question. Any opposed? Seeing none, carried. Can I have someone move a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the City Council meeting held January 19th, 2022?
Hawkins.
Thank you, Counselor Hawkins. I have a secondary and Counselor Shaw. Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Any opposed? Carried. Counsel, we have delegations presenting shortly. Just give me one moment. I would like to call upon delegation Paula Crassion-Winsell. Please introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, and where you're calling from. You'll have five minutes to address City Council, after which you'll have the opportunity to respond to any question that members of council may have for you. Good afternoon.
Hi, thank you. My name is Paula Crassion-Winsell. I'm representing myself, and I live in Regina.
Thank you, Paula. Please proceed.
Perfect, thank you. So today, I'm speaking to you in favor of the Rapid Housing Project from Broad Street North. I lived in Ward 7 since the early 90s. At that time, my mom left her abusive marriage in Edmonton with me and my sister and little more than the clothing on our backs. With no money, no job, and no home, my grandparents, gracious, took us in. We stayed with them until my mom subsidized rental application for a yellow house on 40 Bay was accepted. She began working as a part-time cashier at Safeway. In the year 2000, we moved into a house run by a local Ward 7 housing cooperative. After five years, the co-op signed the mortgage of that house over to my mom, and she became a homeowner. Without the co-op, my mom would not be a homeowner today. She worked hard to pay that mortgage, working overnight shifts at Safeway to get the full-time hours needed to make ends meet. It was thanks to these varied investments in poor families like mine that we were able to find a sense of stability. My family established roots in a community within walking distance of our grandparents and cousins. Our housing allowed me to attend McDermid School from kindergarten through to grade eight. Later, my sister and I were able to pursue post-secondary education. These opportunities could not have been possible if not for the firm foundation that stable and affordable housing gave us. Our community and families of Regina need more supportive housing and housing types for people and families experiencing hardships and poverty. My own family would have benefited from the wraparound care the Rapid Housing Project promises to provide. It has been disheartening to see elected officials propagating stereotypes and joking fears about the people who will rely on its housing. Instead, our leaders should be welcoming this new Rapid Housing Project and its residents as an opportunity to showcase Ward 7 as a great place to live, find stability, and raise a family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll poll council. Do any members of council have any questions? Counselor Shaw.
Just one question. The founders of, I do believe it's called the New Start, where your mother had got this housing and the program that she went through. Were you aware that two of the founding members spoke in opposition of this Rapid Housing last week at the Executive Council through you, Madam Mayor?
May I respond to that?
Pardon me?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just waiting for something. Yes, I am aware, actually, that two of the founders of that co-op spoke to Executive Committee last week. And that's actually what motivated me to present or to speak to you today. Because what they said was sort of in opposition to my family's experience with that co-op.
So do you understand that this is not like the co-op program, this Rapid Housing, through you, Madam Mayor?
Yes, and I'm not saying that it's the same, but I am saying that the circumstances in which my family found its way to that housing co-op and through subsidized housing that I grew up in, the circumstances were similar. We experienced, like, we were homeless. It was invisible homelessness. We were effectively coast surfing. And I think that because I had already grown up in Ward 7 by the time we moved into the co-op housing, we already had roots in that community. And I was really grateful that when my mom did get that opportunity, we were able to stay in Ward 7 and weren't kind of ushered out of the community because then I was able to stay close to my friends and to the elementary school that I knew.
Great. Now, just my final question. Do you realize that the speakers and the majority of the people in Ward 7 and the people around and the people that have been delegating are not opposed to this if it was for women, children, and families through the chair?
I think that everyone, regardless of their circumstance, deserves to live in safe and secure housing. They deserve to have that sort of stability that this Rapid Housing Project provides. And I think that the reason why, like, I'm speaking to you today because I am not one of those community members, and there are other people in the community who have a perspective like mine. We aren't outliers, like some of the discussion around this project would suggest. And yeah, I think that we need to be kind of looking at this as a more holistic, you know, circumstance as opposed to what, like, kind of, I don't know, monitoring or policing who gets access to these things because of the sort of fear that people have about it. But my family are the kind of people that is on the discussion these people would be afraid of, and I think that's incredibly unfair.
I want to thank you for coming forward and thank you for your story. And I wish that more people that were in favor of this would have come to me from my ward. So I thank you very much for you giving your story. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shaw.
Thank you, Counselor Shaw. Counselor Stadnichek.
Good afternoon, and thank you for coming forward through the mayor. My question is, what do you feel is important? Or what are the aspects of this community that you think is a good fit for this kind of a project?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think that Ward 7 and specifically the area around this neighborhood, around this project where, like, I grew up, has access to, like, you know, we have elementary schools, so McDermid and Imperial. I went to McDermid, but I played sports at Imperial School. There's a curling rink that I participated in, like, programs there. The Lions Ball Diamond is in Faraway. That was another affordable opportunity for me to be able to meet new friends, and I played baseball growing up in that area. There's the ice rink, there's Worksday Mall that's within walking distance. So people are able to access, like, grocery stores and stuff. There's convenience stores on the corner of 9th Avenue North and Broad Street. There's Transit that is down that street. There is, yeah, and then there's also just the Northeast Community Center that is right next door, and the after-school programs. And yeah, like, I learned how to... The Northeast Community Center is special to me because I participated in programs there because my family could afford it. It was a $5 membership, and I learned how to, like, paint surround and stuff. So yeah, there's a lot of, like, really important programs and, like, services that are in that neighborhood. And it helped, like, it helped my family and it would help other families be able to kind of find that sense of community and belonging because they'd be able to interact with other people and just feel like they're a part of something. And that's why my family, like, has stayed in Ward 7. My grandparents lived there from the 60s until they passed away. My mom, like, has lived there since she was a child, and I lived there most of my life. So yeah, it's like a really important neighborhood to have for all those reasons.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stadnichek. Paula, I see no further questions from council for you. I'll thank you very much for your presentation this afternoon and ask that you please leave the meeting.
Perfect, thank you so much.
I'd like to call upon delegation Douglas Hudgen. Please introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, and where you're calling from. You'll have five minutes to address City Council, after which you'll have the opportunity to answer any questions that they may have for you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Okay, Mayor Sandra Masters in City Council. Thank you for hearing me today. My name is Doug Hudgen, and as I stated to the Executive Committee last week, I represent the neighborhoods I have lived in my entire life. I'm going to review the events that caught us to this point and why I and all the people I have spoken to in this neighborhood believe 120 Broad Street is a terrible fit for a facility of this nature. As I said last week, I took a stopwatch and walked at a median pace to all the locations of possible concern. The elementary school next door, the Imperial Park picnic tables three minutes away, and the splash pool and outdoor skating rink both 30 seconds past that. The Highland Curling Club is four minutes and 20 seconds away to its front door. This club is a community-spirited club with an open-door policy and a diner. It is the Bingo Palace, whose entrance is two minutes and 20 seconds from the proposed shelter property. Sister Teresa School and the daycare next door are a five-minute and 40-second walk away. Couple blocks south on Broad Street, there's another daycare. You commonly see these toddlers and types taking walks, hanging onto a rope in the neighborhood and going down Broad Street. I will go on. Victorina School and Lions Baseball Park are a short seven-minute walk away. The senior care room, one minute, and so on and so forth. Luther Church is three and a half minutes away. 120 Broad Street is also surrounded by residential properties and a huge apartment building across the street. This is predominantly a residential neighborhood. The owners don't want their property values affected, and this facility will definitely do that. During the executive meeting, I was asked if I would support the facility if it housed only women and children. I said I would have to give that some thought before I could answer. When I was asked again later, my reply was I wouldn't. I was immediately thanked for my time and disconnected. At this time, I'd like to expand on what would have been my complete answer. I'm sure there would be visitors to the residence. Women have family, boyfriends, and husbands. Also, a person is legally a child until the age of 18. We were talking about 29 brand-new, beautiful units. I also thought about this from the residence outlook. With almost 20,000 vehicles a day traffic flow, you're front and center and on display. For the children, as you come and go to school, every other child in the school next door will know you're one of the kids from the homeless shelter. This location is bad for everyone involved. I was also asked by Counselor Jason Mansonelli where I would locate this facility. After some thought, ideally, I would put it in the Warehouse District, and more specifically, I thought of 1050 Scar Street. This is the northwest corner of 5th Avenue and Scar Street. This large vacant lot seemed ideal for our purpose. The sign on the lot says owner will develop for suitable tenants. I spoke to Adam of Adam Needham Realty, and unfortunately, the large vacant area is actually two lots, and he only owns one of them. He also said zoning would also be an issue. I asked Adam if he had ever been contacted by the City Real Estate Division in relation to this project. He said his group had been contacted about midsummer but had nothing that met the criteria. The criteria being abandoned apartment buildings and buildings. Abandoned meaning totally empty. So everyone is clear, Adam Needham Realty is a major developer of commercial and residential property. I then asked him if at any point this group had ever been approached about vacant lots. He said that had never happened. Adam did suggest an alternative location. He owns two 24-unit apartment buildings. The first one is located at 2830 Dooty Avenue and the second one across the street at 2910 Dooty Avenue. They offer one and two-bedroom suites that plug in parking along the sides and backs of the buildings. This location has bus service up and down Dooty Avenue, as well as Albert Street a couple blocks to the east. It is also very close to doctors and pharmacies. The hospital is half a dozen blocks away, as is downtown. I understand the proposed building at 120 Broad Street is to be some kind of modular or prefab building. Renovations at this alternative location will provide local trades with work. Also, there is the time factor. According to the CMHC agreement, the first 25% of tenants are to be in by December 1st and the other 75% by the end of the year. The Dooty Avenue locations have existing sewer, gas, power, and water. Adam Needham Realty also owns the large apartment building across 5th Avenue from 120 Broad Street. There is no doubt he is approachable to a deal on Dooty Avenue that might possibly include a land swap. There is one last scenario to consider. There are a lot of beautiful homes in the proposed area, especially where also the street ends between 5th Avenue North and 6th Avenue North, and St. John's Street ends between 6th and 7th Avenue North. Both of those lots are 50 feet by 200 feet deep, and some are larger. Property values are at stake here, and a reduction of those values is just cause for litigation. With 400 or 500 flyers dropped in mailboxes and GoFundMe available, it wouldn't be difficult to begin litigation or get an injunction that would tie up this project for a long time to come.
Mr. Hudgen, I'm going to advise that you're at five minutes. So if you could wrap this up in the next 15 or 20 seconds, that would be appreciated.
Yep, take one more sentence. I would suggest to report on other options and 120 Broad Street quickly be prepared. Thank you for your time.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Hudgen. I'll ask if any members of council have any questions for the delegate. Seeing none, I'll thank you very much for your presentation this afternoon, Mr. Hudgen, and ask that you please leave the meeting. Counsel, we have communications from Dean Marcia and Jim Kennedy on item CR 22-5. Can I have someone move a motion to receive and file Communications CP 22-1 and CP 22-2? Thank you, Counselor Shaw.
I'm moved.
Thank you. A secondary? Thank you, Counselor Stevens. I'll ask clerk to start the vote. Oh, apparently, I'm going to just ask her, any opposed to the receive and file motion on the floor? Hearing none, carried. We will now consider item CR 22-5, Rapid Housing Initiative: Land Transfer and Capital Grant Allocation to Silver Sage Holdings. Counselor LeBlanc, can you please introduce the report?
Thank you, and good afternoon, all. Yeah, so we had a fulsome discussion about this last week at Executive Committee. We heard from several delegations, I think, considered it for about seven hours. It's tough to find common threads to it, but I think, on the whole, those who voted in favor were quite attracted to the federal funding attached to this money. Think it aligns well with our commitment of the plan to end homelessness and think it does some work to provide supportive housing to vulnerable folks. I think there was some discussion on both sides of the debate about the communication and the community consultation that occurred prior to the proposal in late 2021. We heard from some residents and some counselors' concerns about the communications piece, as well as, to some extent, sort of the makeup of who would live there in particular, that there might be childless men living there, seemed to be part of it. So that's where the debate went. I think we had a fulsome discussion, recommended 8 to 3 at Executive Committee, and so Executive Committee recommends it to council. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor LeBlanc. Could I have a secondary on the motion?
Stadnichek.
Thank you, Counselor Stadnichek. Any questions from council or members on the report? Thank you, Counselor Shaw.
Just, I mean, we brought this up, or I brought this up at Executive to see if we could possibly do something to find an alternative project. We heard from a delegate today. Is this really the best option for the time that we were allotted through the chair?
Mr. Holden?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Masters. So this project, obviously, we've reminded council a number of times that this is a rapid housing initiative. So there was some aggressive timelines in terms of moving forward. Administratively, we did consider a number of locations throughout this process. You know, administration highlighted last week in terms of, you know, the benefits of this site. Obviously, there are some concerns in the community. You know, so it's the site that the city selected. You know, acknowledge and, I think, thank the community for bringing concerns forward, bringing conversation forward. I think there has been a greater understanding of the project, the location, the benefit through those conversations. So I think there is becoming an increased awareness. So this is the site that was selected and recommended for a variety of reasons. You know, I know that the delegation has suggested another site. I think at this point in the process, people can put their hand up and say, "Well, what about this site and what about that site?" We believe that this is a site that fits the criteria that we have to meet in terms of CMHC.
Just to clarify here, Mayor Masters, do we have another opportunity to talk? Or we're done after this? We have one opportunity?
You have one opportunity for a total of five minutes, yes.
Okay, then that's fine. I'll leave it. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I just want to say, and our role as a member of council is to speak on behalf of the residents of our wards. Through me and weeks and weeks and weeks of talking with people, I brought forward what our residents were concerned about. We heard today a delegate that was in favor of this, and I did thank her for that and wished that more would have come so I could have had two sides. Concerns expressed through submissions at Executive in today, council cannot dismiss these as council, and we need to listen to the voices that we represent. As a delegate stated, they need to have security 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This became a concern because is it safe? Why would we need security? I had an indigenous lady reach out to me from my ward who made the statement, and I feel that this is very fitting at this time with this build. What is the point of listening to the community? Reminds me of how they consulted with the indigenous people. Our community has nothing against homelessness initiatives. We are not racist. We are hurt. Never consulted, never came to us for help, never came to us for ideas until after it was done. We had questions. We wanted answers. Council and administration made our community look bad, and that I take offense to. I would like to thank our city manager, Chris Holden, for publicly apologizing. No one is perfect. As a parent, I made mistakes. I always apologized. As a politician, I make mistakes. I apologize. Not apologizing for a mistake, in my opinion, is another mistake. Trust goes both ways. Administration has promised to do better. Better means consulting and engaging. This will be the only way that our community will begin to build trust back and the only way that I will be able to build trust back. So I would like to publicly thank you, Chris Holden, for apologizing to us, and we know we can do better. And I acknowledge and appreciate you saying that to myself and our ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shaw. Counselor Bresciani.
Thank you. Just in regards to the land that the individual that came forward that spoke about on 2830 Dooty and 2910 Dooty, I guess I'm going to ask that, so this doesn't happen again. And I understand that we haven't had a lot of federal funding. This would be our first for initiative for Rapid Housing. Are we going to start looking and planning now when these come forward that we are ready and that we have time to look at engaged CBOs as well as the community? What's the plan moving forward on this through the chair?
So thank you for the question and through you, Mayor Masters. I'm going to ask Ms. Dawson just to speak to the path moving forward in terms of some of the land pieces.
Certainly, through you, Mayor Masters. So we believe that the delegation today was speaking about an existing apartment unit. The funding provided by CMHC is for new affordable housing units. So unless they're uninhabitable or providing new housing within the city, then that wouldn't necessarily be an eligible application. So some of those apartment buildings were not looked at and were not vetted through the program simply because they didn't meet the criteria. But moving forward, it's a really good question. Counselor Bresciani asked, and many municipalities across Canada are facing the same challenge of securing land for affordable housing, both for municipalities and the housing providers that are given the opportunities to pursue this opportunity. So other municipalities have, with council direction, began proactively identifying and strategically assembling development-ready project sites, which would support the project and address local housing needs. So advanced identification of appropriate site would allow the city to work through a more thorough process of consultation and communication with neighbors so that if funding does become available, that conversation has already started. So we would see that as an opportunity that we would look forward to in the future for future projects of this, you know, of this affordable housing, to address the affordable housing needs within our community. So I think that that would be an opportunity that we would pursue and would, I think, reflect what you're asking in your question, Counselor Bresciani.
Yes, thank you very much. That's very clear. Just, I did ask this at Executive. I would like to ask administration, are they going to be planning any kind of stakeholder committee in regards to working with the community associations, RITSA, Silver Sage, again, the daycares, the community, I guess, around there, community associations, in kind of the collaborative approach moving forward? Because we still know there's misinformation out there with the community. I guess, and I did ask that at Executive, I'd like to know where administration, if that's something that administration would be leading to kind of format so we've got the voices at the table to ensure success for this project.
Thank you, Counselor Bresciani. Mr. Holden?
So through you, Mayor Masters. I just want to remind council that we do have our partners online today as well. So we do have Natasha Bastine with Silver Sage. We have Nick Sackville with Big Block, and of course, Erica with RITSA. So they're also available to respond to any questions. But obviously, the need for continued communication and, you know, having the conversation with the community as this project advances, I may just ask Ms. Hill to provide further comments in terms of what our plans are moving forward.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Masters. There is a commitment on the part of the project team and the partners that will begin regular engagements with community over the coming months as the project proceeds. And I think the specifics of that are still to be determined and based both on how the project is progressing and also the requests from community in terms of how they wish to be engaged. But we've talked about additional public meetings and, you know, even in person if we get to a point where that's... public meetings and, you know, even in person if we get to a point where that's a viable option. So definitely a commitment to regular communication moving forward.
Counsel Bresciani?
Okay, again, I guess I was asking for more of representative. I understand that we are for sure, we have to engage the community on an ongoing basis. But I guess what I'm asking is that there actually be some type of a formed stakeholder committee that would actually work with, and even if RPS is there, and I think that would be deemed by the committee itself, working with RITSA and Silver Sage and the city and the community association, those kinds of things. So when something does arise as they move forward, it can be talked about. Because I think sometimes when there's lack of information, this is the concern that happens and things go awry. So I'm looking for something more formalized rather than just engaging the public here and there, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Counsel Bresciani, I'm just going to advise that I did convene a meeting with Counselor Shaw and RITSA and Silver Sage, as well as the school boards and Chief of Police and whatnot, 10 days ago, and did make a commitment to Erica, who I'm going to actually revert this question to, in terms of whatever it is they need. Once the land transfer happens, RITSA and Silver Sage will be in charge of the project. The city would be supporting. And I loved your idea about that committee, about that ongoing in-person or that connection to community. I think it's brilliant. Erica or Natasha, would either of you like to speak to what, how we can either help or some of the thoughts about going forward, sharing information?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for that answer. Thank you, Mayor, for providing opportunity. So through the Mayor, I will reiterate what I stated last week as well, is that we're very excited. If the vote is in favor and this project moves forward in the proposed space, we look very forward to being an active part of the community. We're very excited about providing wellbeing in the community, and we would be very much open to a community response to vulnerability of children and other vulnerable people within the community in looking at those types of safety portions. What we will be very conscious of is any sort of paternalism or any sort of expected oversight over my organization, and Natasha can speak to her organization, that is not expected from any other non-Indigenous organization that is in the community. However, we are always open and look forward to being that positive, that positive point in the community for it. Thank you.
Natasha?
Yes, thank you, speaking on behalf of Silver Sage through the Mayor. I'm absolutely open to engaging with community, getting their ideas. I've already heard a lot of ideas in terms of our piece in this project. I've also already spoken with the school board and met one-on-one with them as well. So, I mean, I agree, it needs to be, you know, collaboration is essential in any community-based project. So that's our commitment from Silver Sage is to continue to work with community. We also are part of that community already with the number of properties we own plus those we manage. So, you know, all the same concerns, our tenants share with the community members that have come forward. We're there to work together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel Bresciani. Counselors of Kidney Act?
Hi there. I will make my comments brief. I just wanted to pass on something that was told to me from someone in Victoria about a similar housing development that they have, located near a school. And one strategy that was successful for them in terms of fostering understanding for this project was developing a strong relationship, yes, with the school board, but also specifically with that local school and principal. I wouldn't be surprised if that's already top of mind for folks, but I just wanted to pass that on, that apparently that was a successful strategy there. I'm excited still to support this and have a lot of faith in all the partners involved in this project. And I think, I hope that those who have doubts in the community will be pleasantly surprised as this development occurs. And hopefully, those concerns can be addressed and people can be proud to have this development in their area. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors of Kidney Act. Counselor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I too am excited by this project. I think it'll lead to stronger citizens. I think that the children that grow up in this project will grow up in a strong community, will be fully engaged with excellent education, will mix well with their peers, and will one day become leaders in Regina. I believe that this project will strengthen the neighborhood. It will provide the neighborhood with new and vigorous life and activity. It will consume services provided by the neighborhood. It will provide good neighbors for the whole neighborhood. And I also believe that this is a good project for Regina. As councilors, we represent our wards, but much more than that, we have a duty to represent all of the citizens of Regina in our efforts to build a better city. This is a project that I think will bring credit to our city, will provide examples on how we could deal with problems related to poverty, to homelessness, how we can help our citizens get a hand up. I'm satisfied, entirely satisfied, with the degree of consultation that has taken place on this project. We have had over the last few weeks and since Christmas, extensive consultations. We've listened to the community, we've heard delegations in favor, delegations that had concerns, efforts have been made to address those concerns, frequently asked question-answer sheets have been provided. I think that the consultation has been good. But more than that, Mayor, as you've made clear and others, this is an ongoing consultation. I don't think it should be a consultation anywhere different than in any other neighborhood that is experiencing change, a point which RITSA has made today. But I think that they are fully ready to engage with the neighborhood to try and create a really successful project. I want to say, I have a great deal of confidence in the expertise of Silver Sage, of RITSA, in directing and guiding this project. I think they have a deep feel for the people that are seeking to help, a deep level of compassion. I think they're able to provide wraparound services, and that'll be great. And finally, I want to say this. I'm really proud of our administration. They saw an opportunity, acting under Council's direction, to develop this kind of housing project. They took advantage on short timelines of the $7.7 million offered by the federal government. They did an exhaustive search for a property that would be suitable. I'm entirely convinced by the city manager Holden's explanation of why this is a good location. I think they've done a tremendous job. I think they've been open, transparent with Council and the community, and they've shown a willingness throughout to work with Council and community. And that gives me very great confidence that this project will be a success. I'm proud to support this, and I thank all who are involved in developing this project.
Thank you, Counsel Hawkins. Counsel Stadnichek?
Thank you, Mayor Masters. I also want to speak in favor of this project. I think it's obvious, all of the information is quite clear that we need, that affordable and supportive housing here in Regina. And this funding opportunity has been great. The first round of funding for the Rapid Housing Initiative only went to some of the larger cities across the country. And the second round, Regina was eligible for it. And I'm, again, as Counselor Hawkins said, very thankful that administration was able to make the application and be successful to get this funding. I do think it's a really important opportunity to meet goals of the city, which is around the comprehensive housing strategy and the plan to end homelessness. This is a really important step forward. And I also want to say that we have a great partner in RITSA and Silver Sage Housing, and I have confidence in their ability to manage and operate this apartment building. I also want to emphasize, and this is kind of commenting on the comments made by Erica Boden, that we do have to be careful. They are an Indigenous organization, and we cannot, we have to respect their autonomy as they move this project forward. I don't want us to push back any of, or feel that there's any way that we have to interfere with their internal programming. I see that as a very colonial approach, so I do think that it's good relations that we have to work on and not getting into the details of what kind of programming they're doing. And that's all I'll say. Thank you very much. I'm really happy that this is going forward.
Thank you, Counsel Stadnichek. Counselor Manzonielli?
Hey, I just want to take a moment to express my support for this project. After being on Council for over five years and talking about homelessness and counting, I think this kind of rapid action is due, and I'm happy to be a part of it. I have felt for a lot of the residents who spoke up on this matter, and I've given a lot of consideration. And I think sometimes it's important to tell when you actually have skin in the game. My family lives within the walking distance timed by one of the delegates, my wife, my child, or my son, I guess I should say, my nieces, my great nieces and nephews, we will all be in this area at night, in this vicinity, on a weekly and regular basis. And I have no fear whatsoever for the people I love in this world, so I just wanted to share that. And I wanted to thank the organizers behind this for their work, and I have the utmost confidence that they'll be able to make this a success. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counsel Manzonielli. I'll ask Council one more time. Any further delegation, any further Counselor wish to speak on the issue? Seeing none? I have some comments to make. Erica, I actually have a question for you first. In speaking with Counselor Shaw over the last week, she and I were having a discussion about what she could do, or what she and I can do in partnership to help make people feel welcome. She has an interest in helping people move along within their struggle or trying to make a better life. And so would you have any suggestions for how it is we can help, as opposed to, clearly, we won't be leading it after a vote, if the vote goes in favor today? So could you advise us, perhaps, of what we could do to help, or what Counselor Shaw, as the Ward Counselor, could do to help make this a very positive experience?
Thank you very much, Mayor, for that answer. And through you, I would say that we are still months away from first, if it passes today, we are still months away from first resident going into the apartment complex, and that there's so much room for exploration of how we could work together and work in a welcoming fashion. I respect the position of Councilmember and Counselor Shaw, and very much look forward to exploring different options. Immediately, my thought is, is it's about education, it's about learning, it's about listening to each other, it's about the respect of each other's opinions, and also being willing to educate others, even if they are from very much hard stances. And to work at the truth of some of what we've heard in the last few weeks, repair relationships, and perhaps through the residents actually living in the building and all of the work that we're going to put in together through these next few months, that that may be one step towards what is deemed truth and reconciliation with that reconciliation part. So, but for right now in the interim, is education, learning, discussing, and having hard discussions, and moving forward together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Erica. I appreciate that. I'm going to start off by saying, as the Chair of Council, I would offer an apology to administration for comments exchanged or shared last week on the floor of Executive Committee. Passions clearly on this issue have risen high, and I've heard it frankly from both pro and against, those passions running hot. And so in terms of administration listening online or present in the room, we trust in the work that you do. We also trust in the investment in the positions that you hold and are to be held. And I'll use an example of, we have approved a position of community engagement, someone focused on community engagement. This is not the first time we've heard, I've heard from my fellow councilors, about the need for engagement, from heritage conservation projects to multi-level family residential being built in areas of the city, to all manner of things. And I look forward to that investment. I think it's also important to note that we are talking about communications and engagement. However, and I will disagree with a few of my colleagues right now, our Communications and Engagement Division was not actually engaged in this process. And it is in our nature to avoid conflict. And we would know by virtue of what this project is, that wherever it went, it could have been predicted that there would have been concerns from the public. I think it's important, and I deeply appreciate, about being better, about moving forward and understanding that engaging with the public doesn't just mean surveys and pamphlets. It actually means, and Counselor Shaw has lived this since December, call upon call upon call from angry citizens, from citizens who are hurt and feel disrespected. Whether they are pro or against, they deserve to be engaged with and have information shared with them. I clearly believe in this project. I deeply appreciate as well the amount of work and the speed with which things were undertaken. But I'm not prepared to pat myself on the back when we've left such hard feelings behind in a community. But I will commit to Counselor Shaw and to definitely to Erica and Natasha as well, to work towards making sure that we do continue to engage at the community level and share information that we can, just about what's happening. But I think it crosses the entire city. To that end, I would like to offer an apology to the residents in the neighborhood who felt disrespected or felt that they weren't important in the process. I think that you're hearing from most, if not all, of Council, and definitely, I believe in administration, that we want this to be success. We believe that we can change the lives of at least 29 people in the first few years, and hopefully ongoing for the next 20. It's important work. And we're willing to support it and get behind it. And I would suggest, at the Council level, we are governors, we are a governing body, and what we have to say matters. And sometimes, because we believe in a project, we are well-intentioned in how we speak, but we're disregarding and we're dismissing and diminishing people's feelings about issues. We may not agree with them, but it's important that people are heard. So, to that end, I would again express appreciation to administration. I know this was outside the wheelhouse of anything we'd ever done before. I believe we're going to change some lives. I deeply appreciate RITSA and Silver Sage and the partnership that you've entered into in delivering these services, and this apartment complex, and anything you need, you can have. Thanks very much to Council. Counselor LeBlanc, you can close off debate.
I'm fine. Thank you.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Madam, I'll be registering my vote verbally.
Thank you, Councilor Stevens.
Just tell me one.
Thank you, thank you. In favor, correct? Councilor Stevens?
Correct.
Thank you. Councilor LeBlanc, verbally, I believe?
Yes, in favor.
Thank you, Councilor LeBlanc.
Sure. Mayor Masters, the vote is eight in favor, three against. Those in favor are Councilors Hawkins, Fendura, Stadnichak, Stevens, LeBlanc, Sekidniak, Mancinelli, and yourself. Those voting against are Councilors Bresciani, Shaw, and Moll. The motion is carried in a vote of eight to three.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. We'll now consider item CM 22 dash two, the COVID-19 update. It's a verbal update information relative to a previous motion of council. Can I ask the city manager to please introduce the report?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Masters. Um, so we will, at every council meeting, be bringing in a verbal update in terms of um, what's been transpiring with uh, COVID-19 since the last meeting. So, I'll, I'll start by just saying, um, you know, there is good news in the community. This past Monday, Premier Moll indicated that the public health order requiring proof of vaccination requirement to enter places like restaurants and stores will most likely end towards the end of February. And that's a similar approach to what's being seen in other parts of the country. Ms. Folk and I have a meeting every Tuesday prior to coming in front of council uh, on Wednesday. And that's really to get an update on COVID-19. The message from yesterday's meeting is he said, really, the theme that is sweeping the country is we need to learn to live with COVID. And that's the approach that um, you know, governments are taking. We're seeing a number of uh, public health officials, although they still alert that, you know, COVID is real, and it's something that we need to be concerned about. You know, the number of cases is slightly trending downwards. Um, so it is about that next uh, you know, phase of how do we learn to live uh, with COVID? We talked to the deputy medical health officer, uh, Dr. Hennick, and talked about, you know, as the province lifts restrictions, uh, proof of vaccination as an example. You know, did he have any advice for us in terms of what we would do in our own city facilities? And his comment was that just the public nature of COVID and the dialogue that is going on across the province, the country, and even the world, um, it would be difficult to maintain proof of vaccination or negative test result requirements without a provincial head, or a provincial health order to back that up. So we've generally been aligned with the provincial health orders to date. And the expectation is that residents, or restrictions in city facilities would be removed once those provincial restrictions are as well. And of course, you know, we do, it's only February 2nd, and we do have until the end of the month. Um, we'll continue to learn more in terms of, you know, the health information that is published daily. And we'll continue to uh, communicate with our medical health officer. Just in terms of Regina, eighty percent of the eligible population in Regina has received at least two doses. Eighty-six percent have received their first dose. So Regina is doing well in terms of people taking the responsibility to be vaccinated. Booster rates are lagging a little bit behind. There's only forty-three percent of eligible population in Regina having received a booster dose. That said, there is continuing messaging around the benefits of being vaccinated and dispelling myths about, um, you know, that vaccines uh, will continue to be important as it will look um, for those numbers to climb even higher. So in the provincial government's update uh, yesterday, the seven-day average of new COVID-19 case numbers was eleven-hundred-and-five. And that was a twelve-point-three percent decrease from the previously reported seven-day average. So there is um, a slight downward trend, um, which again, uh, S H A confirmed in their briefing yesterday. Hospitalizations continue to rise. There's three hundred and seventy individuals hospitalized, and thirty-nine of those are in ICU. That said, of the three hundred and seventy patients in hospital on Tuesday, um, thirty-one percent of those were not fully vaccinated. And that's consistent with comments from Dr. Shahab last week. And of those three hundred and seventy, um, you know, there's a, a number of those that are, are non-COVID related. In terms of our, uh, the city and our employee absenteeism, um, it's remaining relatively stable. Um, we've managed to maintain our service levels with minimal disruption. I had mentioned, uh, at the last update, we had some slight service reductions in transit. Um, that is now back to uh, full service. So, um, you know, fingers crossed that as an organization, um, you know, our staff absenteeism levels are not um, abnormal with what they would be at this type of uh, season and winter, uh, than, than they would be compared to previous years. So we will uh, keep apprising uh, council of any changes, obviously, into the public health order. Um, and we'll continue to monitor the impact of COVID-19 in Regina. I guess the only other uh, comment I would make is that we all know that Frost is fast approaching. And that is a, a very exciting festival. It kicks off on Friday. And just want to um, assure council that, you know, Frost is proceeding. Um, but there are cautions in place to encourage safe participation. So, um, the organizing committee and of course, Council Bresciani is uh, co-chair with, with Mr. Tim Reed. Um, they're making sure that precautions are in place and that um, those that come out and take advantage of the opportunities and the activities will be safe. And of course, Mayor Masters is promising better weather, so um, nothing uh, nothing more favorable than what's gonna happen in the next few weeks. And between myself and Ms. Folk, we take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Councilor Stadnichak.
Um, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Masters. Through you, um, I guess my question is regarding um, a statement that was issued yesterday by the Saskatchewan Medical Association. And in terms of what, uh, inter- you had a briefing yesterday with um, with the S H A, and just sort of, there seems to be a disconnect between what some physicians are saying. So the association of, of, of um, um, the Saskatchewan Medical Association said they were very disappointed in the announcement from the premier in the letter. And they also talked about the importance of having sound medical science, not personal preference or political expediency in order to determine when restrictions be lifted. Could you please comment on that, um, Mr. Holden?
Mr. Holden?
So through you, Mayor Masters, um, you know, so our conversation yesterday is with uh, Dr. Hennick of the S H A. Um, and, and really I think there are, there's a balance on, on two fronts. One is we have um, you know, politicians who are charged to ensure that, um, you know, we're driving activity. Uh, we're promoting our economy. We all know the implications that we've seen in terms of lockdowns and closures. On the other side, you will have health experts that are going to say, um, that yes, this is very real. It's very present in our community. But the reality is, the, the cases seem to be trending downward. Those that are vaccinated, that are exposed to COVID, uh, their symptoms seem to be um, less severe. You know what, but there is a caution uh, from Dr. Hennick. Um, that doesn't mean that even those that are fully vaccinated, uh, that ex- that, you know, catch COVID, that not everyone is gonna be subject to those mild symptoms. So, so it really is a balance. We have health experts that have a position, and I think they're trying to obviously present their position. And then we have the other side, which is really taking a look at, how does this impact our economy? How is this im- impacting the lives of uh, people that live in our, our province? And, you know, to me, the biggest takeaway yesterday was, um, it's about uh, learning to live with COVID. And it is about making adjustments. And people are still being encouraged by, you know, health professionals to say, you've gotta make your own personal choices. Um, you know, in terms of following the rules that we've all learned in terms of handwashing. Um, you know, um, social distancing, wearing masks. Uh, and of course, we have the ability in Saskatchewan, I think more than any other province, to do our own rapid tests and make sure that uh, we're safe. And of course, if people are feeling unwell, then they shouldn't interact with their family members. They shouldn't attend workplaces, and they shouldn't attend uh, retail stores or events. So I think that's where we're moving, but there'll always be, um, you know, from my perspective, a bit of a disconnect between uh, the medical science and the health science. And, you know, the balance of trying to move forward and advance uh, society and, and, and the interest in terms of quality of life and opportunity to participate, and the economic side of that in terms of driving retail and, and making sure that the economy doesn't suffer further.
Um, uh, so another question through you, Mayor Masters. Um, so the, the, there's a number of headlines in the leader post today in the first uh, three pages. Stretched medical staff asked to work extra shifts. Businesses don't believe removing proof of vaccine requirements would help business. Experts say most vaccine claims are not substantiated by research. There, we're seeing a spike in hospitalizations, so um, can we as a city determine some metrics? We're talking about, when we're talking about the efficiency review and talking about measuring uh, our, the performance and quality of our services as a city, that we need to use, um, use metrics and actually use some sound measurements to make decisions. And I would really like us to have some kind of metrics in terms of making a decision. And especially if, like, the story about businesses, they interviewed a number of business owners that said, s- some of those people who are vaccinated may not feel comfortable coming to the restaurant if they're mingling with non-vaccinated people. They don't want to see the, the proof of vaccination lifted. So can we develop as a city, can we develop some metrics in terms of what we think would be safe for residents in Regina?
Thank you, Councilor Stadnichak. Just prior to turning it over to uh, Mr. Holden, I'll just actually clarify a point. Is that the number of active cases, and we know this is only what's tested, has gone down for eight, the last eight straight days. Our number in ICU is actually down as of yesterday, as is our daily hospitalization here in the city of Regina. And so from a provincial metric to a Regina metric, since we only make decisions about that, I just wanted to be clear that in terms of the data we're getting from the medical doctors, that's actually the, the data. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, and thank you, and through you, Mayor Masters. So, you know, obviously, I think there's going to be a lot of dialogue in the community. So yes, the article's on the front page about proof of vaccination, whether that's in place or not in place, and how people will react. I, I think that's part of the conversation that's gonna happen in the community in the coming weeks. Um, you know, to the mayor's point, we are, uh, we take the advice of the public health officials. And although hospitalizations are up, the, the positive tests are trending downward. Um, and they're, they're optimistic that this is decreasing. Um, in terms of our own metrics, um, you know, the S H A, and I don't wanna speak for them, but I think their absenteeism rates are in and around twenty percent of their workforce. At the city of Regina, we're in about five percent. So, you know, the biggest metric for us is what is happening in our own workplace. And um, that drives whether or not we need to uh, put into action some of our business continuity plans. Uh, because we do have those plans in place for all of our uh, departments. So, we do have metrics in place. Um, the biggest metric for us is, at what point are we not able to sustain the delivery of, you know, critical and essential services to citizens? Um, but the real metrics are being, um, you know, undertaken and delivered by the health experts. And there is some comfort, um, that we are starting to uh, move towards a downward trend, and that hopefully we've hit the peak. But there will be hospitalizations, and that's, you know, obviously for the S H A, um, to, to comment on and, and, and position that.
Okay, my, my last question through the mayor, my last question through the mayor is um, um, the viral um, concentration in um, the wastewater. It, uh, the reports are that that is increasing. Do you have the numbers on that?
Count, uh, I think she's referring to the report from, I think it was January sixteenth or January twentieth data, that it was going up. So go ahead, Chris.
So, um, through you, Mayor Masters. So interestingly enough, the conversation with Dr. Hennick yesterday uh, indicated that the wastewater load was actu- actually decreasing. And then, of course, I saw in the newspaper today, um, a contrary position. So let us take that away and um, you know, look into that as to whether or not it's actually increasing or decreasing.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Um, I guess I have no more questions, but I am really quite concerned that we uh, are gonna lift restrictions too soon, and that we need to give confidence to the public that things are safe at our city facilities and in the community overall. And that um, and that we're making decisions based on sound evidence and not just for political expediency. So that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Stadnichak. Uh, Mr. Holden, I can direct you to the article in the newspaper. They reference either January sixteenth or January twenty in terms of, not sure if that was peaking at that time, but Dr. Hennick, I know, actually has, before your calls, always pulls the night before data, so I appreciate that follow-up. Councilor Stevens?
Thank you, through the chair. Uh, on that last point, Mr. Holden, can you confirm that the city will continue its participation in the COVID uh, sewage testing program even after the provincial guidelines change at the end of the month?
So, uh, through you, Mayor Masters, I, I'm gonna ask uh, Mr. Honright to comment. He was nodding his head, but maybe he has more detail.
Through you, Mayor Masters. Um, we will continue, uh, as long as they continue to ask for the information. We provide them the data, they do the analysis and provide the output of that data.
Okay, thank you. Uh, s- second question. This pandemic has been going on for quite a while. Right now, I don't, I struggle to understand what restrictions are even in place. Um, you have friends over, you can go out. I, I don't know actually what I can't do right now, uh, compared to what had happened at the beginning of the pandemic. Um, I have to wear a mask, and I need to show proof of vaccination at city facilities. Sounds like we kinda gave up on the actual restrictions ages ago. Can you walk me through what currently exists when it comes to staff as well as public facilities, and what there is to even rescind at the end of this month?
Mr. Holden, Ms. Folk, which?
So I'll start.
Great.
So, uh, through you, Mayor Masters, and, and to response to the Councilor Stevens, yes, the current restrictions are in alignment with the public health order. So, you know, we do require proof of vaccination or a negative test. We require that for our own city staff to come in and work um, in our city facilities. And we require that of residents, um, and other, you know, contractors that, that work for us. Um, you know, obviously masks, we require in all of our indoor city spaces. Um, obviously, there are some exceptions in terms of if someone's physically exerting themselves, they're not required to wear a mask. But if they are in a public space, then they must be masked. Um, but when they're, when they're actually participating in, in fitness activity, they do not have to. Um, I might just ask uh, Ms. Folk, who leads a task force, um, on a weekly basis just to, you know, get updates and, and look at uh, the status of where we're at in terms of COVID and how it's impacting our employees and, and our centers. So, uh, Ms. Folk.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Holden. Uh, through you, Mayor Masters. Uh, I'll maybe comment additionally on where we are asking for proof of vaccination, which is in alignment with the public health order. Uh, so currently, we are uh, requiring that to enter City Hall at all of our leisure centers, all of our indoor arenas, the Neil Bachwell Civic Art Center, um, all of our neighborhood, community, and senior centers, and of course, the Regina, uh, Regina Floral Conservatory. So that kinda gives you an, an idea in terms of where that proof of vaccination piece uh, is required. Of course, the masking requirement still is in place, so on public transit. Um, and in any indoor space, uh, you're asked to wear that, with the exception of participating in fitness uh, activities as Mr. Holden has indicated. Of course, uh, along with that, uh, there have been adjustments in terms of uh, contact tracing. And so our organization, like any other organization, uh, has been reaching out uh, to do uh, some contract tracing. When we've been advised that there has been uh, someone who has tested positive uh, within one of our facilities. In addition to that, uh, from an employee's side, uh, we've been uh, making adjustments as the public health orders have shifted when it comes to self-isolation requirements. And we've been sharing that, of course, across the organization. Uh, as Mr. Holden did indicate, our absenteeism is, is, is quite good. And actually, this week it's uh, started to downward trend from uh, the week previous. So we are looking at that on a, a regular basis. And we have a number of practice- And we have a number of practices in place, including cohorting, alternating shifts that we have continued to focus on in all of our operational areas.
Thank you. My my final question, that was very helpful. In Ju- in July of 2021, when COVID ended for the first time in Saskatchewan, we heard from the provincial government that we're lifting basically everything, including masks. That turned out to be a disaster. When the provincial government lifts lifts all of its own requirements, what's your thought on masks, what we know about their effectiveness in certain circumstances? And the reality that they've been a minimal disruption? Will that be something you would consider separate from the proof of vaccination and other guidelines?
So through you, Mayor Masters, you know, I I think that's a part of the conversation that we need to have in the coming weeks ahead. You know, obviously, when health orders change and certain things are, the restrictions are removed. I think the advice will still be that it's up to individual employers and organizations to make their own decisions. The challenge becomes, you know, where is the public? And how willing are they to accept the fact that, you know, outside of a public health order, we may, as a city, council may decide that they still want to require masks. So, you know, I think there's going to be a lot of opportunity in the coming weeks to really have some conversations. What is the medical health evidence saying? What is the, you know, the the caseloads in terms of positivity? What's going on in our in our hospitals? At the end of the day, I know this this council has prioritized the health and safety of our staff and the public. So if it's in the best interests of the community to keep some of those restrictions in place longer, then obviously, that's a conversation that we'll have with council. You know, and obviously, administration, we're going to bring you all the information that we can to make sure that you're making a very informed decision because it will have, obviously, implications within the community.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Stevens. Counselor Zakidniak.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify the process for whenever, you know, we've been warned that the province is planning to lift restrictions by the end of February or sooner. I I don't know if we'll have, when that decision is made. I I think it's probably unclear how much lead time there will be until that, for that announcement and when the change is implemented. How would, in terms of our decision-making process as a municipality, once the the province has has clarified when it is that they're planning to move forward, would the next step be either a discussion at a regular city council meeting or a special meeting if needed to finalize our next steps?
So it's you, Mayor Masters. So I think it's really important to just ensure that, first of all, there are ongoing meetings between the S H A and and the city at a number of levels. There's also conversations with the business response team through the province. It's, it's obviously a lot easier to take restrictions away than it is to implement restrictions. So on the implement side, we've always said, you know, we really need, you know, 10 days to be able to put processes in place to make sure that we have, you know, proof of vaccination and staff in place, et cetera. So if there are restrictions that are being lifted, there's an opportunity for us in these updates to provide a more fulsome report. For example, if there's a recommendation that administration wants council to consider. So we've never just simply followed, we follow the public health order, but if a snap decision comes down and there there needs to be a conversation with council, then obviously, we'll make sure that we have either align with one of our council sessions that we have, or we need to schedule an emergency council meeting to deal with it. So there'll be ample time to have that conversation with council.
Okay. And just to clarify, although some decision-making powers have been transferred to administration to act in relation to COVID, any lifting of restrictions, that would be a conversation that came to council and would not be pursued, that decision by administration. Is that correct?
So through you, Mayor Masters, you know, the administration is always sensitive to the conversations around council. So a public health order being lifted, administration, we may come and recommend that we follow that public health order. That might be our advice. But I, I mean, I'm already hearing today that there's, there's some concern from council members. So we'll bring that discussion to council and let council consider and and decide on administration's recommendation.
Great. And we will have the ability to maintain the status quo of what we have now if council desires, even with the province lifting restrictions, like that is a possibility. And I suppose unless the province makes it clear that municipalities do not have the ability to do so. Is that accurate?
Mr. Holden, I think you've answered this already. You want to clear it up again?
Just through you, Mayor Masters. Council has the ability to make decisions about their own facilities. It can't extend beyond city-owned facilities. So if council wants to make that decision to put precautions or restrictions in place beyond the public health order, then that's within your decision-making authority.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate the update and it's good to consider what advice administration's currently receiving and where folks get a sense of where administration's currently at. And this is a rapidly changing situation. I'm glad that we have these regular updates. And I think it'll be important for us to continue to receive this information and and consider what the best decision is for our municipality. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselors Zakidniak. Counselor Shaw.
So I just kind of have a question here along, how does this work? We're talking with this, Chris, and it's like, if council decides to bring this back to us and how would this even come come to council for us to make a decision on extra things that we're going to do over and above what the province has done or taken away from? Through you, Madam Mayor.
I think, I think maybe the how in this is the only difference in the question, but the third time's a charm.
So so through you, Mayor Masters, once the province makes decisions and announcements about the timing of restrictions being removed. And, you know, they have been doing that with some some notice. It doesn't just happen immediately.
Yeah.
That's the opportunity for the administration to put a report together and say, city council, this is an update to the new public health order.
Right.
Here's what we would recommend. And then, of course, council will deliberate and discuss and make a decision either in support of what we've put in front of you or an amendment to to take a different direction.
Right. So so at that point, council would have to say, we don't agree with or we do agree with what you say. Thank you, Chris, for saying that. I just want to say that I got voted in to take care of municipal issues. I want to go back to potholes, garbage and snow removal. So I just want that on the record. Thank you.
I shall send those emails on potholes, snow removal and roads to you, Counselor Shaw. Counselor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I I want to just follow this line of questioning, but with a very precise question. Council is master of its own procedures. It decided after Christmas to go back to virtual meetings as opposed to in-person meetings, in-person meetings. If there's to be any change in that, would it have to be, would it have to come on the direction of council? Or to put it another way, will council be consulted before our meeting status changes?
Thank you, Counselor Hawkins. I think maybe I'll I'll look to the city clerk. I I would suggest that that would be a poll of council, Counselor Hawkins, but maybe, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Masters. I I would concur with with the mayor's approach, Counselor Hawkins. This is a very significant issue that all members of council have strong feelings and opinions on. And I think it would be absolutely reckless of us to move something forward without your, without the concurrence of council. So yes, it would be brought back for council to make that decision.
Thank you, Clerk. That's the answer I expected.
Thank you, Counselor Hawkins. Counselor LeBlanc.
Thank you. I just piggyback my interest in the subject, which is if the regulatory environment with respect to COVID restrictions is going to drastically change at the end of February, I would appreciate debating that at council and having some look at what we do in light of what we might frame as the regulatory gap. So I'd appreciate that from administrations and if that's possible in and around the end of February. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel LeBlanc. Counsel, oh, nope, that's Counsel LeBlanc. In the absence of any further questions, yeah. Administration, I think it's it's fairly clear that we'll continue to watch it week by week as we have. And both trend lines, as well as the regulatory environment that Counsel LeBlanc refers to at the end there. Appreciate the extra work going through in terms of connecting with Dr. Henick regularly. I do have a question. And it's because I can't remember. Just to be fair. There was a time previously where the city of Regina attempted to put in its own emergency public health order. How would? And we attempted to do that to what end? What was, what was the purpose of doing that? And 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 what was the result of that? Because now I'm I've queued into Counsel LeBlanc's comment about the regulatory environment. Mr. Holden?
Through you, Mayor Masters, and and thanks for the question. That that takes us back to the start of the pandemic. The council of the day wanted to declare a state of emergency for the city of Regina. And it was looking to restrict and actually close some businesses related to, you know, certain retail. And that got put forward. In those situations, the province has to approve those. And, you know, the province said no to the city of Regina. And of course, you know, they put their own in shortly after. If the public health order changes, the city of Regina only has the authority to put restrictions in place related to our city-owned and operated facilities. So if we said at the Sportplex Sanders Miller Center and Northwest Eastern Center, we still wanted people to wear a mask and we still wanted people to require proof of vaccination, that is within our authority. There's no ability for council to say that means that other non-owned, non-city-owned facilities have to abide by any kind of restrictions because that is the responsibility of the province.
Thanks. I, it was, I forgot about the, it was a state of emergency. I I called it something else. I apologize. Thank you. Counselor Mancinelli.
Appreciated the roundabout to the original lockdown and the explanation about authorities. And just to follow up on that, when the province does drop its regulatory manner right now, the city would have no authority anywhere but city facilities. And even over and above that, without any type of provincial backing, we couldn't discriminate against people based on our own best judgment without any health order or health issues. So this all kind of becomes a moot, a moot subject real fast. It's the province that's going to control this, not the city. And it's in entirety.
Counselor Mancinelli, can I get you to make a motion to receive and file this report? Thank you, Counsel. Can I get a second there? Thank you, Counselor Shaw. Seeing no further comments from council. Again, thanks very much for staying up up to date on all of this. Council, oh, it's a receive and file. Are any opposed to the receive and file? Hearing none. Carried. Seriously, pay attention. And just before we adjourn, council, hang on two seconds. We're going to take a 15-minute recess and I just ask that you all, if you could log out and hop back on for the for the call that we'll have this afternoon together. That would be fantastic if I, you know, at 2:45 perhaps, if we could reconvene. I think you've been sent a link and I will see you then. And I do need a motion to adjourn.
It's all moved.
Thank you, Counselor Hawkins, seconder. Thank you, Counselor Shaw. Any opposed? See you at 2:45.